Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 26, 2024. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this evening, I will be doing the invocation. God, we ask your blessings on those who have been called to lead the community in which we live, play, and work. Guide them peacefully through debate. Remind them that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is good, right, and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Amen.
Okay, next is roll call.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Here.
Councilmember Nunez.
Present.
And Councilperson Nella is absent tonight. Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Mayor Jones here. Okay, if the councilor please come to the front. We have a recognition this evening.
Do I go now? Oh, you can come on down.
How long have you been with us?
Eighteen years on the board.
Eighteen years, okay. Not a long time.
I was here when you were appointed for the filling in the spot, and then you got elected.
Yes, five times now.
I know.
Isn't that hard to believe?
And I got reappointed to this board, and then I've served as a president for fifteen and a half years.
Wonderful. Well, we're sorry to see you go, but we definitely understand.
Other people have stepped up. I'm so glad.
Yes, all right. Well, this evening, I'll read this to you. The San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Colleen Lukoff. Colleen Lukoff joined the San Marcos Community Board in 2006 and has served as president from 2008 onward. In this capacity, she collaborated closely with fellow volunteer board members to diligently manage the grant allocation process, ensuring support for nonprofit organizations dedicated to serving the residents of all San Marcos. And whereas Ms. Lukoff throughout her nonprofit professional career provided consulting services to nonprofit organizations concerning their growth and fund development requirements from 1985 onwards. She graduated from San Jose State University and held the designation of Certified Funding-Raising Executive from 1992 until 2021. Whereas, under the professional stewardship of Colleen Lukoff, the San Marcos Community Foundation awarded over $1 million to our guests, to our local nonprofit organizations, thereby positively impacting numerous lives within the San Marcos community. Colleen's significant, meaningful, and enduring contributions to the San Marcos community and the greater San Diego area over nearly two decades through her dedicated service on the San Marcos Community Foundation Board will forever be cherished and remembered. The San Marcos City Council hereby commends you, Colleen, for your exemplary service and dedication on the San Marcos Community Foundation Board and your passionate leadership advancing the nonprofit community and all of the residents here in San Marcos. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you want to say a few words? Okay, all right, she's got some words.
She's giving me the mic. That's so nice. So I was just realizing that twenty years ago, this month, I put my first money down and bought a piece of land on San Marcos because I've been a fifth-generation native Northern Californian, but my daughter, who's here with us today, married a man from this area and so kept saying, "Come closer," so we did. And we're grateful that this is our new hometown, and I wanted to look for a way that I could serve our community. And this was one that I chose to be involved in. And it's been a great honor and pleasure to help and work with all of our community to make this a better place for us and for our children and grandchildren. So I plan to still be involved in different ways, but I'm appreciative of others who have stepped up to be on the board. And I think back to Doc Burton, who I know many of you know, who was on the board, was the board chair at the time that I joined this board, and he's passed now. But he was a former mayor of this city, and it's been just an honor and pleasure for me to be of service to this community. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you mind over here if you don't mind? Right over here. Right in the middle.
And this is the gentleman from my district.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the honor. Okay, please. That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As a former board member, you gifted me your box of papers when you moved.
That's right, I do.
Thank you so much. And this picture on the right is from a gathering that we had with some of our nonprofits that we granted money to. It's on our Facebook page. If anybody wants to join the Facebook page, we have San Marcos Community Foundation. And it is California, not Texas. There is a San Marcos, Texas, we learned, right? So, but we're better, of course.
And the most important thing, there's also cake in the adjacent room. So let them eat cake. All right, moving on to our consent calendar. Do we have any items that any councilmembers wish to pull? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor? Any notes? Seeing none, okay. Okay, moving on to oral communications. We will be taking three speakers during, no speaker slips? Okay, all right, so no speakers since we don't have any speakers during the.
Sorry, ma'am, we do have one or two, it looks like.
All right, so we'll be taking three speakers for fifteen minutes, and then we will be going into our public hearings because we have a few of those this evening. Sorry about that. If someone was thinking, "Wait, wait, I wanted to speak." Thank you. Okay, first up is Jordan Abiel, followed by John Mosher.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jordan Abiel. I'm the president of the San Marcos Professional Firefighters Association, representing the uniformed men and women who make up the San Marcos Fire Department. I'm here today to thank you for your continued leadership during challenging times. And we want to continue to highlight the pressing public safety needs that exist in San Marcos. As you are well aware of, being briefed on the Standards of Coverage Survey, it's been since 2008 was the last time that a fire station was added in San Marcos. Since that time, our call volume has nearly doubled. Our population has grown faster than any city around us, while all of those cities have added fire stations since that time. Our call volume continues to increase. It's nearly doubled since then. And we continue to ask our members to do more with less. I appreciate the leadership that you have demonstrated by giving direction to city staff to find land for that fifth fire station and to move forward with that process. But we have to continue to highlight that. Just building the station isn't enough. We need another fire engine, and we need to hire the firefighters to staff that engine. Along with that, something else that was highlighted in that Standards of Coverage Survey and that we want to bring to your attention is the need for a fourth firefighter on our truck company. We are one of very few fire departments around who still only operates with three firefighters on our truck. And with the level of growth and development vertically in our city, with more challenging buildings, mid-rise and high-rise, it's unsafe, in our opinion, to have only three firefighters on that truck. It doesn't meet industry safety standards, and so we want to also highlight that need. We realize that the city is in a financial challenge right now with our budget, currently operating at a deficit. We understand that revenues haven't kept pace with growth in the city. And for those reasons, we were very encouraged at the last city council meeting to see the broad support, both from members of public and city council, for the tax measure that was studied. We are optimistic to have seen the broad support citywide that came as a result of the surveys that were sent out. And we want to reiterate that need that exists. We think that now is the time. We don't think our city can wait any longer to provide the public safety that is needed. And we don't see any other path to securing that kind of funding absent of a tax measure that can bring in that kind of revenue. Again, we want to thank you for your leadership, for your support. We understand the challenging times that we're all in, but we're very optimistic, again, based on the support that was demonstrated. And we look forward to working together with you all in the future and looking forward to seeing San Marcos to continue to thrive. There's a reason why so many of our members live in the city. Many of them grew up in the city, are raising their families in the city, and we want to continue to see San Marcos thrive as it has. So again, thank you. That's all we're here to say, and hope you have a good night.
Thank you, Jordan. Next up is John Mosher and then Antonia Montoya.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Michelle, Helen, and Phil. Actually, I was here to talk about item number four on the consent calendar. Basically, our mobile home park, San Marcos Mobile Estates. And our petition was deemed adequate, and this was setting a date for the rent review hearing. The reason I'm bringing this up is that I noticed this year, from our signatures submitted, we had like 171 submitted, 151 were accepted, so 26 were denied. Last year, the number was around 20, if I remember correctly. Previous years, it's only been around seven or eight, maximum 10. So I wanted to get together and actually look at this and find out why these particular ones weren't accepted to try and alleviate a problem in the future. I'm seeing a pattern happening. I know how the signatures were gathered, so if it's the way we're gathering them, so that was one thing I wanted to talk about. The other thing was, a few weeks ago, we had a presentation about a potential sales tax increase here in the city. The next day, there was a presentation by the school district. And they're looking at putting something on the bond, on a bond measure on the ballot at the same time. And so I mentioned to them at that meeting what I had heard the night before here, and that if we're trying to do what you're saying, try to keep funds raised in the city in the city, it might be a good idea for both the city and the school district to work together to get both measures passed if they go ahead at the same time. We're already seeing other entities start to push their tax raises that they're going to be putting on the ballot, too. So there's going to be multiple, and I think we talked about it that night. Sandag and a few others are potentially out there. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will reach out to you about the signature question that you had. Thank you. Antonia Montoya.
Buenas noches. My name is Antonia Montoya.
Good evening. My name is Antonia Montoya.
Could you please pull the mic a little bit closer to her so that we can actually pick it up on the record? Thank you.
And I'm here today with the same situation as before. Hoping that we will find, that they will find a place for us to live. This is why I and my neighbors are here, because we're all in the same situation. Last Friday, I went to see Cynthia, and she said that they would probably relocate us if not find us a hotel. And they said that they would pay something, you know, partially, but I would like to have that in a written form. Because right now, wherever I go, the apartments are extremely expensive, and I've been telling them that, you know, the situation that I find myself in. I told them that I can only pay what I'm paying right now and that I cannot pay anything, you know, higher than what they're requiring. I have been canceling my surgery for my eyes because of the same reason that I don't have a place to go to. And my vision is actually at risk because at this point, you know, if I have surgery, I have to be in a place because I'm not going to be able to do things. So I'm presenting my situation to you and representing the people that have not been relocated to this day. So I'm asking you once more to please speak with Chris and help us out because I can't be in this situation anymore. So again, this is what I'm here asking you, please.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Irma. Thank you for coming. Okay, we actually have one, I'm sorry. Yeah, so we actually have, I'm sorry, Antonia. Irma does not want to speak. She just wanted us to know that she is here. She's a Villaserena resident, Phase Two, and she's here with her community. So I wanted to mention that. And then we have two more, three more speakers. We will be, we have several public hearings this evening, so not to stay on task. We have fifteen minutes for our first oral communication, so we have the second oral communications, which will be after our public hearings, so we're going to move to those quickly, and then we will come back. We have three more speakers that will be after our public hearings. So our first public hearing is the proposed uses of the CDBG funds for the 24-25 Annual Action Plan, and I believe that we have a presentation this evening. Sylvia, I think this is you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Sylvia Solis Daniels. I'm the Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager, and this is Quentin Hufford, Housing and Neighborhood Services Analyst. Tonight, we'll present the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Annual Allocation for 2024 to 2025. The U.S. Department of HUD and Urban, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually provides funding to eligible jurisdictions through the Federal Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG. This is an entitlement program, and funds must be used for eligible projects and programs that benefit low and moderate-income individuals and households within the city of San Marcos, which are consistent with the national objectives in the city's approved 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan. The CDBG national objectives of the program are required to benefit low and moderate-income households, prevent or eliminate slum or blight, address urgent community development needs, such as an emergency. And to receive funding, the city must prepare and adopt an annual action plan, which includes a public hearing that states the use of CDBG resources for the fiscal year. CDBG funds are used primarily to support public services, program administration, affirmatively furthering fair housing, and public facility or capital improvement projects. The city anticipates an award of $710,000, which is based on the prior year allocation as HUD has not yet released the 2024-2025 allocation. In the development of the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan, a community needs survey was published in English and Spanish to collect input from San Marcos residents, business owners, employees serving San Marcos, and representatives from agencies serving San Marcos residents. The survey was published online and sent directly to community stakeholders, public service providers, and printed for completion at local outreach events. The survey yielded 289 responses, ranking the highest needs of community services and community facilities, followed by affordable housing and economic development. Following the needs assessment, staff published an online application for public service providers and received 13 project applications, which are currently under review for the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan. The annual action plan schedule began with the opening of the public comment period on March 22, and will close for public comment on April 23, following a second public hearing. The city will submit our annual action plan on May 14 and will await HUD approval at the start of the new fiscal year, July 1, 2024. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for questions.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. Any questions from the council? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
I have one. Thank you for the presentation. You said the precise dollar amount has not been received yet, so we're using last year's. When, and you're under review for these 13 projects, don't you need to know what the dollar amount is before you approve these? Or have you just received them and you wait for the dollar amount and then decide?
We receive the applications and estimate based on last year's. And then upon completion of a contract for all agencies, we then put in the final amount.
Okay.
So we would adjust as the percentage of funding is adjusted.
I see what you're saying. So they'll be told what they're going to get, but it may change?
Correct. We'll have the new contracts July 1.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. If we can go back to the slide that starts with Community Needs Assessment, Public Services. Yes, that one. I'm looking at the red where it says Community Need Ranking. This is the results from the survey?
Yes.
Can you tell me what's the differences between Community Services and Housing, labeled one and three?
Sure. Community Services are identified as activities happening for the general population or the LMI population that's required to be served. So it could be anything from a food bank to an after-school program. Housing is specific to the actual creation of affordable housing or the support of the development of affordable housing.
These two particular items caught my attention because last week I was fortunate to be able to be at the League of California Cities Policy Committee meetings. I was there with Councilmember Musgrove. I'm part of the Community Services Committee. And one of the presentations that we received was from the city of Burbank. And specifically, they talked about some of the programs that they've been able to implement to address some of the homelessness and housing issues that most cities are, that are facing, just like we are. And so what, if I understood correctly, what they said is that they they have been cobbling, and they use that word, cobbling together funds from different sources in order to address some of these pressing needs that we have. And so one of the sources of funding that they specifically mentioned was their CB, CDBG funds in order to address some of these critical needs. So I'm wondering, is that something that we have looked to do? Particularly, of course, what I have in mind is since we have these Villaserena residents that are being forced to relocate. So what I'm thinking is, could some of these funds be used to help these residents to transition?
Specifically for relocation, that, so as I mentioned, the annual action plan falls under the Consolidated Plan, which is our five-year plan. And under that five-year plan, we would have had to identify relocation as one of our goals. So under this current iteration of our annual action plan, relocation funding is not an eligible project.
So then that, then now I'm a little bit confused then. So then what are we approving, let's say, today and next? Because I see in terms of our timeline that I see here that on April twenty-third, we're going to have public hearing number two to approve final twenty-two, twenty-five. So are we approving something that's already been approved or is this, so what's new about this?
So this year's plan identified our community need ranking, and we will identify the service providers which will fulfill the need ranking following tonight's meeting. So what you're approving tonight is the first draft, and then it is open for public comment to, for the public to add feedback. On April, the April twenty-third meeting, that would be the final. That would close the public comment period and have the final draft.
So for the benefit of our public, then can you remind us if somebody wants to submit public comment between today and April twenty-third, what does that look like?
Sure. They can email the city or come into the city and provide direct public comment feedback, public comment or feedback to any of our housing staff or anyone at the front desk and submit via email.
Okay. Any other ways that they can submit?
Currently via email and person, and obviously on the phone. Sorry, yes, on the phone as well.
Okay. And where do they find that contact information for our residents and the public?
Within one of the attachments of the staff report, there, it includes all of the opportunities to submit public comment. It's also available on our website and has been published in two newspapers.
Do we have hard copies of this report for the individuals that are here today?
We don't have hard copies available today. There is a hard copy available at the front desk for review, but I'm happy to, if you'd like to, anybody to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to make a copy.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Musgrove, you had a question?
Quentin, Sylvia, thank you very much. The standard for determination for the grants, is there a fixed metrics? Or is it changed year to year, or do we have something sent down from the funding sources?
We have a quantitative analysis of the applications that we've ranked, and we're currently reviewing and finalizing those.
And who established that?
It's HUD-approved, using HUD standards, so that using the HUD threshold for the first allowability and then local preferences used in our community need ranking.
Sure. So they, they give us the framework and we're allowed some latitude based on specific needs as long as we remain in, within that framework?
Within the national objectives, yes.
Okay. And do those change year to year, or are they fairly consistent?
Consistent since inception of the program.
Okay. So we're effectively applying the same standards we did last year and the year before, simply looking at the local needs and as long as they fit within there, that's what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I had a quick question on the community.
I'm sorry.
Just one comment that, or question that Councilmember Nunez raised. With respect to the CDBG funds, as Ms. Daniels has very
Uh-oh.
noted, the relocation was not specified in, in the documentation that is, is essentially controlling this session of the CDBG, this season of CDBG funds. Additionally, to any, whatever extent relocation had been involved, the relocation issue in question that you specifically raised is a private obligation and contractually has been assumed by the developer. And to whatever extent that we are, you know, there is a use of public funds to benefit a private developer or persons affected by things that are actually a private developer obligation, then that means that those funds are not used for actually the public purpose. So I think what the focus potentially should be is, is on national court to assume and, and conduct its relocation activities pursuant to the plan and to relocation law. And CDBG funds could be appropriately applied elsewhere as noted in the, the actual plan.
Thank you for that, for that clarification, Ms. Peak. I do understand that. One of the things that does come to mind, though, is that as a city, we did approve the use of CDBG funds in the past to address our COVID situation and the housing crisis that we had faced. So that is something that this body has done in the past.
Oh, yes. And Councilmember Nunez, glad you brought that up because that was something for every single resident. If they were in need, they could apply for that. It wasn't under direction of something that had to do with a private obligation, as Mrs. Peak had clarified, for an affordable housing development where they have a relocation plan that has been submitted years ago. I think that was two thousand thirteen or fourteen? I don't know. Quite a while ago. Anyway, but I did have a question for you, Sylvia, I think. I think the, the community services, would that, would that also include things for our seniors at our senior center that would be open for the community? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And do we use, which I'm, I'm embarrassed that I actually don't know this answer. Do we use that for some of our senior lunch programs and the, and the things that we do to enrich our lives, benefit them, which is like when we have an event for them and things like that? I just don't know that answer.
We do not currently, but all applications are still under review.
Okay. So it could be something if we wanted to do something specifically for any seniors, which would be open to the whole community, that we could do something like that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Just wanted to double check on that. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the report. This is a public hearing, so we do need to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Second?
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other further discussion about the item itself? It will be coming back, I do want to mention that, on April twenty-third, which is the public hearing number two, to approve the final twenty-four, twenty-five annual action plan. Again, on May fourteenth, which is a deadline to, oh, it's right there. Deadline to submit the approved twenty-four annual action plan. And then July first, following the HUD-approved CDBG funds available, which I'm assuming. Sorry, I just went to ask Sylvia that question. We would have the final, the final number by then, I think, July first, or no?
Yes, July first is when we, we get the number.
Right. Okay. I thought so. Okay. So when we come back to that meeting, we'll actually have the number. All right. I do have to, yeah, okay. I was like, wait, I think I still need a motion. Okay, motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second?
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, which is ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four, fifteen, forty-three, amending San Marcos Municipal Code Title Twenty by assigning a new chapter number, Chapter twenty-point-three-six-zero, to the previously adopted transportation demand management provisions, and finding that said amendment is exempt from review under CEQA. So this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the San Marcos Municipal Code. I believe this was a cleanup item. Who's, oh, there you are. Mr. Faraci.
Hi, good evening.
You guys are magical. I turn my head for one minute and then someone's there and someone's gone.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Jones, council members. This is simply a cleanup item. We used a chapter number that was already existing, so we're basically just changing the number of the chapter. There are no changes whatsoever being made to the ordinance itself. Because it was an ordinance, we are required to advertise it as a public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, the city attorney said that they, it was not a typo because it was clearly intended to be a chapter that's already in use, so I made him do it.
Uh-oh. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion from the council? If not, I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
No, you're supposed to second it. I made the motion.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Well, then I'll second it.
Okay. Motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any notes? Okay, it's, the public hearing is closed. And do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes. There you go. First reading. We'll have, we'll see it at the next meeting. All good with our city attorney then. Okay, moving on to item number nine, Resolution Number twenty-two, twenty-four, ninety-two, sixty-eight, ninety-two, sixty-nine, and ninety-two, seventy, and Ordinance Number twenty-two, twenty-four, fifteen, forty-two, Capelina Apartments entitlements for a mixed-use development consisting of one hundred and nineteen multifamily apartments and four thousand square feet of commercial space, including an environmental impact report, EIR twenty-three dash zero, zero, three, a general plan amendment, GPA twenty-two dash zero, 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 three, a rezone R two, zero, 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 three, and a site development plan, SDP twenty-two dash zero, 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 seven.
Thanks again, Mayor Jones. Councilmembers, Chris Garcia, our senior planner, and Kyreen Chua, our principal civil engineer, will be making the presentation tonight on this item.
Thank you. The Capelina Apartments project is a mixed-use development consisting of one hundred and nineteen apartments and approximately four thousand square feet of commercial space with seven live work, I'm sorry, with six affordable units for the city council's consideration. The applicant requests several entitlements, including approval of a general plan amendment, rezone, and site development plan. There's also a request to certify an environmental impact report for the project. The project site is a vacant parcel bordered by Capelina Road to the south and Mission Road to the north and is located between Rancho Santa Fe Road and Pacific Street. Commercial uses are located to the west, east, and south of the project site. A mobile home park is also located to the south of the site across Capelina Road. A vacant lot and single-family homes are located across Mission Road to the north. To develop the project site with the proposed residential and commercial uses, the requested entitlements include a general plan amendment and rezone from mixed-use three to mixed-use two. Mixed-use three is a non-residential mixed-use designation, and mixed-use two allows for mixed-use with residential densities of thirty to forty-five dwelling units per acre. Surrounding land use and zoning designations include mixed-use one, mixed-use three, business park, and residential mobile home park. The general plan amendment and rezone would amend the general plan land use map and zoning map to the proposed mixed-use two designation. Staff supports these changes since the project would implement goals of the city's general plan by providing housing near transit, employment opportunities, as well as supports multimodal transportation. The project would also provide high-density housing with a range of unit types to support workforce housing, as well as provide six deed-restricted affordable units on site. Under the site development plan, the project design was reviewed for compliance with the development standards of the mixed-use two zone and other regulatory provisions. The site development plan addresses the design of the apartments, commercial space, associated private and common open space, residential amenities, and review of the floor plans and architectural elevations. The one hundred and nineteen apartments are located within two four-story buildings and consist of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units. Twenty-seven of the units are located on the ground floor. The project will include a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot outdoor recreational area that includes a pool and spa, play area, and barbecue and picnic areas. A twelve-hundred-square-foot roof deck is also located off the third floor of the southern building. The four thousand square feet of commercial space is located on the ground floor of the building, situated along Capelina Road and includes a fitness center, co-working space, leasing office, and mailroom. One hundred and forty-seven uncovered parking spaces will be located on the site, and eight Level Two EV chargers will be installed in the parking area. The site will be accessed from two driveways along Capelina Road, and there will be pedestrian access only to Mission Road to the north. The applicant is requesting a five percent density bonus under state density bonus law by providing five percent or six very low-income deed-restricted units on the site. Parking requirements for density bonus projects are one space for studio and one bedroom units, and one and a half spaces for two or three bedroom units. No guest parking is required. The applicant is requesting one incentive and two waivers from development standards per state density bonus law. An incentive is being requested to reduce onsite parking from one hundred and fifty-nine to one hundred and forty-seven spaces. A waiver from the minimum floor area ratio and required setbacks has also been requested. Incentives and waivers shall be granted for qualifying projects as long as they are not illegal, do not have a specific adverse impact upon health, safety, or the physical environment, or do not have any adverse impact on a property on the California Register of Historical Resources. Staff supports the requested incentive and waivers that qualify under density bonus law. As I mentioned, a waiver has been requested for a zero-foot setback along Mission Road. This is due in part to the city requiring over twelve thousand square feet of dedication along Mission Road for future road improvements. Typically, a building would be required to be at least ten feet from the right-of-way. Although the building setback will be zero in some areas, the building will be located approximately ten to twenty-five feet back from the existing sidewalk. Furthermore, landscaping will be installed in the right-of-way by the developer and maintained by the city. The following slides show colored renderings of the proposed project. This is the Mission Road elevation, which shows the northerly four-story building, which is approximately fifty-one feet in height. Each unit has a private patio or balcony, and access is provided via interior corridors. Both buildings are designed in a contemporary architectural style with flat and pitched roof elements, stucco and metal siding, wall projections, and exterior facing balconies with metal railings. Solar panel, solar panels and mechanical equipment will be located on the roof of each building and be screened by parapet walls. This is the Capelina Road elevation of the southerly building, which is approximately fifty-six feet in height. The commercial space is located on the ground floor of the four-story building, and a roof deck is located on top of the third floor at the right of the rendering. Finally, this is a review of the outdoor recreation area, which is located to the southerly building and interior of the project site. Landscaping throughout the project site will consist of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. A total of eighty-two trees will be planted as a result of the project, which includes ten trees within the city right-of-way. Four existing trees will be removed. All landscaping within the Mission Road and Capelina Road right-of-way will be publicly maintained. There was a public comment received regarding the desire for the project to install more native plants. The project will comply with the city's landscape requirements, including the water-efficient landscape standards. A public workshop was held on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Comments were received regarding the perceived lack of parking and potential impacts to on-street parking and surrounding properties. There were also concerns with existing mobility and safety. In response, the project is providing parking in accordance with the state density bonus law. Furthermore, Capelina Road frontage will be improved with a new sidewalk and create new paved on-street parking spaces. The project will also provide pedestrian connections to Capelina Road and Mission Road, and an existing turn lane from Capelina to southbound Rancho Santa Fe will be extended as a result of the project. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, was prepared for the project. The draft EIR was circulated for public review for forty-five days, from November third to December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. During the public review period, two public comments were received by the city, and a response to comments has been provided within the final EIR. The San Diego County Archaeological Society commented that they concurred with the impact analysis and recommended, and the recommended monitoring for cultural and archaeological resources. And a resident proposed that the project site be developed with a city park instead, and the residential use be located elsewhere in the city. Next, Kyreen Chua with the Land Development Division will discuss the transportation analysis.
The project's transportation analysis consists of both level of service analysis to ensure consistency with the city's general plan and vehicle miles traveled, VMT, analysis to determine transportation impacts for CEQA. The project's local transportation analysis concluded that the project anticipates to generate eight hundred and seventy-four average daily trips with sixty-three AM peak hour trips and eighty PM peak hour trips. In accordance with the city's mobility element of the general plan and its goals, intersection and road segments should operate at a level of service D or better. Per the city's Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines, improvements are needed if the project increases road segment volume-to-capacity ratio by more than point zero-two, if the road segment already operates at an unacceptable level of service. In the near-term twenty-twenty-five condition, the road segment of State Route seventy-eight, eastbound Rams, north Rancho Santa Fe to Descanso Avenue operates at an unacceptable level of service without the project, and the project does not increase the volume-capacity ratio by more than point zero-two. Likewise, Horizon Year twenty-fifty doesn't require improvements for deficient level of service comparing without and with project scenarios. However, to anticipate cumulative project, traffic impact citywide, the project will participate in the Congestion Management Community Facilities District. For assessing vehicle miles traveled impacts, the vehicle miles expected to be traveled by someone living or working at the project location is compared, compared to county-wide averages for the project's office and residential components. A project's VMT per resident or per employee or per employee needs to be 15% below the regional averages in order to avoid a significant impact, so it shouldn't exceed 85% of the regional average miles traveled. The project's retail component did not require a VMT analysis, as it was able to screen out per the city's Transportation Impact Analysis Guidelines as being less than 50,000 square feet and considered locally-serving retail. As shown on this VMT zone map, this project's residential component is within a green VMT efficient area and therefore did not require a VMT analysis.
The project EIR provides several mitigation measures to address biological and cultural resources and geology and soils. The mitigation measures are routine in nature, and all environmental impacts have been determined to be less than significant after mitigation. As required by CEQA, the EIR evaluated a few project alternatives. The no-project-no-development alternative would not develop the site, and the city would not benefit from housing or other economic impacts of the proposed project. A hypothetical project of 90,000 square feet of office and 10,000 square feet of retail was evaluated as a project consistent with the existing mixed-use three non-residential zoning. Compared to the proposed project, this alternative would more than double the average daily trips and increase other environmental impacts such as air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise from vehicles. Furthermore, this alternative does not meet the project objectives such as providing housing on the site. Finally, a reduced intensity alternative was evaluated, which would also have 4,000 square feet of commercial but only 75 units. This development would have a similar footprint and mass, meet most project objectives, and would result in decreased environmental impacts. However, the mitigation measures would be similar in nature to the proposed project, and the alternative would not substantially lessen any of the significant environmental effects of the project. Therefore, staff supports the project as proposed. Since the project proposes to change the land use designation from non-residential mixed-use three to mixed-use two, fiscal and economic impact studies were prepared to evaluate the benefits and impacts of such a change. In the studies prepared by DTA, the proposed residential and commercial project was compared to a hypothetical office and commercial development under the current zoning. Generally speaking, fiscal impact studies look at city revenues such as taxes, license, and permits, and look at expenditures such as public safety, public works maintenance, and administrative services. The fiscal impact study for the project estimates the proposed residential and commercial project would result in a recurring fiscal surplus of approximately $1,200 to the city's general plan, as compared to $63,000 if the site was developed with the hypothetical office and commercial project. Economic impact studies typically look at how much benefit the development would bring to the area based on economic output such as sales and employment. The economic impact study for the project estimates the recurring economic output to the city would be approximately $4 million compared to $50 million with the hypothetical office and commercial project. The one-time economic outputs resulting from construction of the project are also located on this slide. The project site has not been developed under the current non-residential zoning and is unlikely to be developed with a 100% non-residential use, due to trending economic conditions where there is a greater demand for residential units than the need for office or commercial space. The city's consultant is available tonight if you have any specific questions regarding these studies. The planning commission heard the project on February 5 of this year, and no members of the public spoke. The planning commission had questions and comments regarding parking, residents per unit, street lighting, security, and inconsistency with the traffic report. In response, the project's parking requirement is dictated by the state density bonus law with the entitlement incentive to reduce parking further. The applicant stated that some of the parking will be assigned, but that EV parking spaces will not be assigned. The deputy city attorney clarified that the number of residents could not legally be restricted under the Fair Housing Act. The project is conditioned to provide a street light at each driveway entrance along Capalina Road, and there's an existing street light located across the street from the project. In response to security questions, the applicant stated there will be cameras installed throughout the site and also security patrol at night. And finally, there's an errata to the final EIR vehicle miles traveled report that addressed the error in the traffic analysis. The original analysis assumed slightly more traffic for the project, so the result was a more conservative analysis. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval of the project by a seven-to-zero vote. In summary, the project is consistent with the general plan land use and housing goals and provides needed rental housing in the city, which includes six affordable housing units on-site. The vacant site would be developed with housing and commercial near public transit, the inland rail trail, and employment opportunities. Finally, the mixed-use project would generate less traffic than a typical office and commercial development on the site. Staff recommends that the city council certify the project EIR and approve the requested entitlements as outlined on this slide. And that concludes staff's presentation, and we are able to answer questions. The project applicant also has a brief presentation on the project.
Okay, I have a quick question, and this might be of our city attorney. And just because it's fresh in my mind, the reduction of parking is 12 spaces from 159 to 147. My question is, do we have adequate language, or is there adequate language that we could insert that would keep that parking parking, that state ADU law would not come into play in this? Just a question if it's possible to do, and if we were able to do that.
It's my understanding that the project conditions very clearly state the number of parking spaces that'd be required. The project would then have to come in and receive an amendment to allow any reduction in parking space. As to creating an absolute bulletproof vest against the state meddling in parking ratios again, I cannot guarantee this. I simply cannot.
Which I only bring this up because this honestly, the state taking away local control consistently really gets me irritated. So I just thought I would ask a question to see if there was something that we can do, but honestly, no.
I do think that HUD currently allows cities to restrict conversions of garage spaces to ADUs in multifamily residential, but that's not, you know, if that's a future concern of yours, we can take care of that in the interim, at least now. In the future, I have no idea what's going to happen with the conversion issue. But with respect to parking ratios, you know, we can adequately and appropriately document and record the number of spaces that relate to this project at this time. Whether the state will change it such that it would allow the developer to come back and further reduce, I just don't know.
Okay, well, I only asked that question just because it's fresh in my mind, and I did see that there was a public comment that talked about parking on the street, and, you know, we definitely, we know what happens. I mean, people have cars. They still use cars to get around. And so, anyway, I just thought I would bring that up. Anyway, any other questions, or shall we move on to the applicant's? Oh, yes, council member Musgrove.
The number of deed-restricted homes, is that a component of the density bonus of six out of 119? That's the relative reduction that's allowed because of the?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I noticed it's quite a few units on that footprint. Yes, we'll just go ahead with the project presentation.
Okay, yes, deputy mayor, were you? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and get the presentation then. Sorry to throw you for a loop. You're going, what are they talking about? Well, it's fresh in our minds.
Not a problem at all.
Yeah, okay.
So, Chris, is this click right, press and I'll go through? Thank you. Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. Throughout this project, the main face, this product manager for our team, has been John Reiling, and he was planning on speaking tonight to share the ins and outs, and he's had a family emergency that took him to the East Coast last week, and he'll be there till next week. And so, a few days ago, I got asked if I could present on his behalf, so here I am. I also want to commend you on running such a tight ship. Usually, when you're ninth on the agenda, you're sitting there for a few hours, and I think we've been here less than an hour, so, well done. I'll make it very quick and available to answer questions at the end. Some of our consultant team and my colleagues are here as well to answer questions afterwards. So, the part I want to address at the beginning is why we're changing these from a commercial use to a mixed use with primarily residential. As you can see here, the site is vacant. It's been vacant for decades, and as this city council knows, our company, Ambient Communities, is not against commercial development. We've developed quite a bit of commercial, including here in San Lito Hills, but commercial here just doesn't make sense. There's increased vacancy in this part for the commercial that's there, and it just wouldn't pencil for the construction cost versus the rent you could get from this location. So, it was natural as we looked at this to pursue this rezone, really for the highest and best use, to help with the housing shortage, to pursue this change from the commercial use to 119 apartments. And with that, we didn't really change the scale of what could be built if it was commercial to what it is residential. It's almost an identical scale as far as size and heights and whatnot with what we ended up with. In summary, there's 119 units in our project. Six of those units are 50% AMI restricted. 113 of them are market rate. We also have 4,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor. That includes, in the bottom right of that slide, a fitness center, some coworking space as our commercial component. The, we didn't want to have all the units of just one or two sizes, so we actually have three, four different unit sizes. Studios make up about 9% of the units. One bedrooms and two bedrooms are about 38 to 41% each, with another six or seven percent as three bedrooms, as to be able to meet, you know, different tenant profiles that may live in this, in this building. We tried to list who our potential tenants are for this building, and even while students are first, I don't think students are going to be the primary tenant for this building. I actually see a lot of people who have jobs or work nearby for some of the employment here in San Marcos, have ties to Cal State San Marcos, the hospital, and those sorts of things. I think we will probably have some students, but I don't see it being a primarily student housing project, and that's not our goal, is to make this really a student housing project. There's the square footage of landscaping and, the other thing we tried to do, typically you see an amenity and rec area like what we've done in a project with 150 to 200 units, but we really wanted to put our best foot forward on this one, so even with only 119 units, we're doing this exact same amenity here that we're doing on another project in another city with 198 units. So, this will really be a great place, we think, for people to live. And our goal in providing a great place to live is less vacancy, less turnover, and better retention. There are several public benefits for the city in this redevelopment. There'll be about 200 job, construction jobs through this. Obviously, the apartments will be more rental housing for your city, increasing the supply. We talked about the six restricted units. The, oh, we're also dedicating some land, as Chris talked about, of additional right-of-way for the city along there on Mission Road. The, oh, and the ultimate residential use is significantly less traffic than what a commercial use would have in the same location. Last, I had this slide with the pretty pictures. Most of our consultant team, I don't know if this was, talked about earlier or not, architects, civil engineer, planner, all of our consultants have done several projects here in the city. And so, we took great pride in choosing a good consultant team that has success in working with your staff and all of you as we developed this project. So, we're, I personally am very happy with the way the project turns out, the way it looks. I think it's going to be a great place for people to live, and we're very excited about it. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Yes, council member.
Just for disclosure, I met with Mr. Reiling a few weeks back and discussed essentially what we're talking about tonight. The commercial portion of it, where will that be facing? Will that be facing Mission Road, so presumably walk-up?
Not on Mission Road. It'll actually be facing Capalina Road.
Okay.
If that's the section of Mission Road, we close off any access from Mission Road onto our property. So, there's no way to turn from Mission Road directly into the project. So, the only place you could put commercial where people could park in front of it and access it is along Capalina Road.
So, other than walk-up for pedestrians that are coming home, it looks like you had a sidewalk coming in from Mission Road, but otherwise no other access. Does that sound right?
There, there's two access points on Capalina Road.
Okay, thank you.
And then, plenty of, we're actually doing sidewalk improvements and parking spaces along Capalina Road to help with the commercial parking.
Any other questions on the council case? Deputy mayor?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and I also want to disclose I met with John Reiling a few weeks ago, within the last month, I think. So, I have a couple of questions. The 147 parking spaces, is that in addition to the eight EV charger spaces, or is that part of it, that charging spaces are separate from the parking?
That's a great technical question. I'm going to have to refer to Chris.
That it does include the eight EV parking spaces.
Okay, okay, so 139 regular. Can non-EV cars park in EV spots? Can you park at a non-EV spots?
Our management plan is to assign each space to a resident.
Okay.
And so, what our target's going to be is, as residents sign leases, obviously the ones that care about an EV space will be assigning them to an EV charging space.
Right. What if you have empty spaces and residents need, empty EV spaces? Could residents park there that do not have an EV vehicle?
Because this is a private development, I don't see why that, why there'd be a restriction to that if that had to happen.
Okay, the other question I have is, the parking on Capalina, how many spaces approximately will there be? Because I'm guessing that's where some of the guest spots might be?
We have, we do have onsite.
Yeah, five or something?
I believe it's eight along the project frontage on Capalina. Currently, it's, you know, it's on paved dirt area.
Right, okay, okay. The six deed-restricted bedroom units, how many number of bedrooms are those? Are they?
You know, there's a mix. I don't have it, but I believe it's three, I believe it's three studios and three two-bedrooms, but it is a mix of units.
Okay, it's not just?
It's not just the smallest ones.
Okay.
There's a mix, I believe, like I said, I believe it's three studios, the smaller ones, and then three two-bedrooms.
Okay, and then on the portion on, let me get this straight, Mission Road, that's going to be maintained by the city, are we receiving money for maintaining that, or how are we? Did I misunderstand something?
No, the city would maintain it via CFD funds.
Okay.
Yeah, landscaping, probably.
Landscape and maintenance, CFD.
The owners will pay into that?
Correct.
Let me see, flip to pages back. I asked about that. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, council member Nunez.
Thank you, mayor. I do have a couple of follow-up questions. One of them is in regards to the deed-restricted, and I remember seeing something that three of those units were going to be studios. Can we confirm that?
Yes, I found the page. We do have three that are studio, one bath at 600 square feet, and three are two-bedroom, one-bath at 925 square feet.
So, my question either for the city, for the applicant, how do we determine which ones are going to be deed-restricted?
You mean which specific unit?
Yes, and the size. I'm thinking about the size of the, of the units, since you do have the variations.
So, yeah, all the studios are, every one of the studios, one bedrooms, twos, and threes, are all fairly similar in square footage. There's not like a 1,500-square-foot two-bedroom and a 700-square-foot two-bedroom.
Let me clarify my question. If I remember correctly, there's three studios that are going to be deed-restricted, and then there's three units that are going to be deed-restricted of a different size?
Yeah, I think, do you say there were two bedrooms is the other three? One bedroom?
Yeah, I believe typically what the applicants will do is they'll work through housing and neighborhood services folks, and they'll go through the pro forma with them in terms of the six units, and it's determined through that process. So, I don't know if there's an actual calculation or anything that actually determines that, or if it's just based on an overall pro forma and what, how it's going to work. In this case, we're providing a range of, a range of unit types. In this case, we're providing a range of, a range of unit types, the smaller ones and then the two-bedroom ones.
So I'm still not understanding. Are we following a state guideline or requirement in terms of, since we are providing a density bonus?
I'm not aware that there is any type of guideline on saying that three of them have to be studios or three of them have to be two-story. I think it's just based on the fact that there's, there are deed restrictions. There's discussions with the city and ultimately, ultimately, in working with the applicant, it's determined what a good mix of affordable units would be, affordable unit types.
I'm still not clear on that, but, but I am wondering, right, how we came to three studios versus some of the larger units that would be available for potentially families? So that is something that I would like to know how we came up with, with these numbers. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood. I'm also very familiar with the parking issues that we have already in the neighborhood because parking is so limited currently. So I am concerned, along with the residents that address parking concerns, and what this will do. So I'm not entirely clear how the anticipated issues are being resolved.
Again, the parking requirements that are applicable to this site are dictated through density bonus law. So in terms of that, in terms of the ratios, we need to follow the, those requirements. So we don't have any wiggle room on that. So the other thing that we'll have in place is a parking management plan. So we'll go ahead and review that. I know in the case, in this case, the property owners are going to be the managers. It's not going to be, at least from what we were told, that it's going to be sold. So they'll go ahead and have onsite managers that are going to be looking at the parking and making sure there's, that there's adequate parking. And parking will work out on the site in conjunction with our approved parking management plan. So, and we'll, you know, review that and approve that document.
I just wanted to add that there were some discussions. So the state density bonus law without the incentive to further reduce parking would result in 147 parking spaces for the residential alone. And that's what has been provided onsite. So the deficient, and one way of looking at it is it's deficient in the 12 parking spaces required for the 4,000 square feet of commercial. I did have discussions with the applicant regarding making those additional spaces onsite available for the additional, let's see, spaces that would be dedicated for the commercial, making sure those are available to residents overnight. So there's a little bit, we're working with them to, to make sure the parking's managed onsite.
So when we do these parking management, when we look at this, are we considering then the already existing needs of the residents that are in that neighborhood? Or is that separate?
No, we're looking at what the needs of the project. The parking management is, parking management plan is for onsite management of parking on the site.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I actually, thank you for asking that question because I'm going to ask our city attorney. There would be no legal basis for us to require parking due to the outside project, I would assume. I mean, I don't think there could be any legal basis that we could charge a developer to put in more parking because the outside projects are, are causing parking issues.
That's correct.
Yes.
We would be precluded, and in all likelihood, the developer would indicate that that is, that would make the project financially infeasible, which is also a no-no under planning and zoning law for density bonus projects.
Right, okay, just wanted to clarify that. And then I also met with John Reiling. You're not John, I understood he had an issue. So on the, on the parking where it was mentioned about the 12, 12 parking spaces that are now going to be additionally, essentially allocated for the commercial, would there be then a reciprocal? Because you're working with staff, but it would be good to know that, that you would be willing to have that as reciprocal parking? That there wouldn't be an overnight issue where you would preclude folks from being able to use those spaces overnight?
And, and I can't speak on behalf of, of John or Chris and Joe, but I'm unfamiliar with how that was all happening.
Okay, well, if you could just please pass that on, that would be definitely something I would like to see. And then on the, this is kind of a weird thing, I'm going to talk trash now. On the trash enclosures, I, I think about this pretty often. I'm assuming that there will be organics, enough room for organics recycling as well?
I believe that's required. These ones, I believe, are in each individual building. So I think they're a large, a larger-than-normal area for trash.
Okay, well, then there would be room for the organics on top of it.
Correct, it's not an exterior trash enclosure.
Okay, and then, and then as far as the, I'm glad you brought this up too, council member. The whole thing about state taking over our control, I rail about it pretty often. I, I personally don't have an issue of what, you know, what their actual affordable units are. They're affordable units, I think, you know, a lot of times our young couples, they need just a studio, and they're happy to have it. So I think having two bedrooms and studios makes a lot of sense to me. I, you're following state density bonus law, being that it doesn't actually call out what that has to be. It doesn't have to be a certain amount of this or that. I do like that it is the very low affordability rate, which is, you know, something we desperately need here in the city. So anyway, those would be my only comments. But again, if you could just pass on that reciprocal parking would be greatly appreciated, that there would be no laws or rules for overnight, that they wouldn't be able to use those when they're not used by the, the actual retail. That'd be good.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Thanks for that comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other, yes, council, or deputy mayor?
I have one more. I just thought of, I think a comment was made and it triggered my mind. So these are entitled as apartments. Could these ever eventually be converted into condos for sale?
They could. They'd have to go through a map process in order to do that.
They're not being mapped as.
Correct.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
Okay, with that, do we have, it's a public hearing, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll motion to close. I'll second.
Okay, motion.
Just for the record, Madam Mayor, would you not have any public comments?
Oh, I, I figured that, sorry. I, I should clarify that, but thank you. Because I didn't see any slips, just check, okay. All right, so motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay, motion passes. So.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I, I just want to say that I, I really like this project. We voted on it. I really like it. I like the location. I think it's a great site for this size of project. It's really close to transit. We have buses, we have the Sprinter, and it really is a great site. So, and I really like that we have the deed restricted units that are being built. So I think it's great to see that. And I do want to put that on the public record that, that it's a great site. And I think a lot of families will enjoy moving into that area. So thank you for this.
And it's been sitting there a long time, just vacant.
Forever.
With, with, forever, yeah, forever, since our city incorporated. I don't know if anything ever went on there. It is good to see a transformation, I think, that it will make in that part of the community. Okay, public meeting is closed. So we have to adopt and introduce the following. Adopt Resolution 2024, which is the EIR. Adopt Resolution 2024-9269, which is the general plan amendment. And then also to introduce the Ordinance 2024-1542, which is the rezone. And then adopt Resolution 2024-9270, which is a site development plan. So I'd make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? Nope, motion passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on, we would have our last three public speakers. If anyone has any else, anything else they would like to add for public speaking, please bring forward that now. So it'll be Maria Mendoza, followed by Angelica Santiago, and then it will be Edward Caillias. Maria Mendoza?
Buenas tardes, alcalde y concejales y personal. Mi nombre es Maria Mendoza.
Good afternoon, mayor, all the members. My name is Maria Mendoza.
Please, thank you, please pull the mic down so she can be on the record.
Soy residente de Villa Serena.
I'm a resident from Villa Serena.
He venido aqui para hablar y llamar su atención.
I have come here to call your attention.
Sobre la reubicación de los residentes de Villa Serena.
For the relocation of the residents of Villa Serena.
Aún estamos varios residentes sin vivienda para el mes de mayo.
Several of us are still without a home or a residency till the month of May.
Solamente nos quedan 35 días para desalojar la vivienda.
We only have 35 days left over so that we can leave the, our homes.
Estoy esperando por la llamada del miembro del consejo a la señora Silvia.
I'm waiting for one of the members of the council to call Ms. Sylvia.
Para preguntarle si tienen algunos recursos a la ciudad para podernos ayudar a las personas de bajos ingresos.
To see if the city would have some kind of resources for people with low income.
Porque estamos varias personas en situaciones críticas.
Because several of us are in critical situations.
Somos madres solteras.
We are single moms.
Personas de la tercera edad.
Elderly.
Personas con enfermedades mentales.
People with mental health issues.
Y con limitaciones.
And with limitations.
Solamente les pido a que no olviden que estamos en espera de una vivienda.
I'm only asking you to remember that we are waiting for a home.
Gracias al, al alcalde.
Thank you, mayor.
Concejales y personal por su tiempo.
For all the members of the council for your time and concern.
Espero que se tomen medidas para ayudarnos.
I hope you take measures to help us out.
Thank you very much, Maria. Next up is Angelica Santiago, followed by Eduardo Caillias.
Good evening, everyone, council members and mayor. Hope you're all having a great day. Angelica Santiago. And I am with Universidad Popular in here once again, just supporting and advocating for our residents in San Marcos from Villa Serena Phase Two. Two things today. First of all, I will be reading a message that one of our Villa Serena residents sent me. He was not able to make it today because he has work commitment. But he did want it to have his voice to be heard. His name is Alex, sorry, Alexis Salgado. And I believe you all have met him before. So this is his message. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Cesar Salgado Alexis. No puedo si.
Good afternoon, my name is Alexis and I would not be able to attend today.
Pero me gustaría saber si pueden meter el tema de Villa Serena.
But I would like to see if you can speak about Villa Serena.
La reubicación para la siguiente junta.
The relocation for our next meeting.
Porque pienso que solo así nos pueden tomar en serio.
Because this is the only way that I think we would be taken seriously.
Se aproxima la fecha y seguimos en los mismos.
The date is coming and we're in the same position.
Gracias a todos ustedes.
To, thank all of you.
So that's his message.
All right.
And then on behalf of my, for my comment, I just wanted to reiterate too that it would be great if we can plan maybe in the future, some, no, you're right, workshops, you know, tenant right workshops. And also to prevent this un-happening again and making it smoother, like understanding the whole relocation process. That's a very complicated process. The language is very complex. So maybe some ideas for future planning or even in the near, near moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Eduardo is next.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Soy Eduardo.
My name is Eduardo.
Soy residente de Villa Serena.
I'm one of the residents from Villa Serena.
Como hoy vengo, que ya faltan 31 días.
Today I come here, I think it's 31 days.
Es el mismo proceso desde el tiempo que vinimos a la primera junta.
It is the same process of time that when we showed up to our first meeting.
No he tenido ninguna respuesta.
I haven't received any response.
Ya busqué.
I have looked around.
Estoy tratando de encontrar algo.
I'm trying to find something.
Encontré en algún lugar, este, una posibilidad.
I found something that could be a possibility.
Nomás querían que mandaran la información de la oficina a esa persona.
But they wanted information from the office to be sent to that person.
Iba a pagar un poco más.
I would be paying a higher fee.
Estoy de acuerdo.
I agree.
Iba a meter a otra persona igual para que me tratara de ayudar porque no califico.
And I was going to ask somebody else to help me out because I do not qualify?
El problema fue que cuando fui a la oficina, que dieran mi información a, a la compañía donde fui.
The issue is that when I went to the office in Villa Serena?
Sí.
In Villa Serena, to ask for the information to be sent to the other place where I'm interested.
Y, este, básicamente me dijeron que el apartamento no era para mí porque no calificaba con los ingresos que tenía.
Basically, they told me that I didn't qualify because of my income.
Pero por eso estaba buscando yo otra persona para poder calificar.
So I was trying to find another person to see if I could qualify.
Y se me hizo injusto que me dijeron que yo no era elegible, que era otra familia.
And I felt that it was unfair that I would not be eligible, but another family would be.
Simplemente fui y hice el trabajo que ellos no hacen por buscar.
I went, you know, and I've been doing the work that they're supposed to be doing for looking.
Por buscar dónde tenemos, tengamos dónde vivir.
Looking for a place to live.
Ahora también le comenté sobre un sorteo porque tiene su compañía grande.
I also spoke about a lottery because the company is quite large.
Dijo, bueno, a principio dijo que tenía un sorteo para ver quién calificaba, y yo pregunté por el sorteo.
Well, at the beginning, I was told that the lottery was to see, you know, which people would qualify.
Le pregunté igual sobre el sorteo y me dijo que él nunca pronunció el tema de un sorteo para reubicarnos.
I inquired about the lottery and he said I had never said anything about any lottery for relocation.
Y si mal no recuerdo la. Ajá, la señorita Núñez, el día que fue a la junta en la.
And if I recall, Ms. Núñez, when she was at the meeting, our community meeting.
En la oficina.
Right there at the office.
Le dijo que como garantizaba que podríamos estar viviendo a gusto pues sin, sin angustia pues.
I remember her saying that how could, if we could have a guarantee of, to, you know, leave, live in peace while, you know, there was nothing going on.
Y lo que, o sea, ella dijo que nos tenía que dar un papel o garantizar que nos iba a dar el hotel, va. O sea, hasta ahorita estoy de acuerdo.
And Ms. Núñez said that, you know, there should be some kind of a written form saying that we were going to have a hotel stay or something.
Y yo pienso que así como le pregunté del sorteo, va a llegar el tiempo que también nos va a cerrar la puerta.
And I'm fearful that when I ask about the lottery, he's going to do the same thing, where all of a sudden he's just going to close the door with us. where all of a sudden he's just gonna close the door with us.
Y lo único que quiero es qué puedo hacer.
And I want to know what I can do.
Yo, mi familia y los residentes que vivimos ahí.
My family, myself, and the residents that live there.
Eso es todo.
That's all.
All right, thank you.
Okay, gracias.
I know this is not an agenda item, but I do have a question, Michelle.
Sé que esto no es de la agenda, pero tengo una pregunta.
Oh, sorry, I thought someone said something and I was like, wait, I didn't say anything yet. Thank you. My question is, I think there is a general, and maybe Sylvia might be able to help this out, I think there is a general misunderstanding, again, still as to what our role is in all of this. I'm also concerned, because I've heard this several times now, that some of our residents believe that even though their income has increased and they can afford a larger rent ratio, that they are thinking that they should have the same rent that when they first qualified, when their income was lower. So I think there needs to be a general understanding or maybe information given as to how the state law works and that we don't set this, that's not our, like, we don't set the income qualification that it is a requirement when you do live in affordable housing. And so I think if we could get something together that Sylvia could put together, and I, she's probably, I don't know if I could see her, anyway, if something like that could happen, I think it would just be probably something we should be able to give out to folks so that they understand what housing law is and that we are following housing law. I think that's really important because I really do feel like there is some sort of miscommunication or loss of communication, that yes, when your income does exceed the income levels, that you can no longer qualify for a lower payment. That's, that's how housing laws are as well. If you're purchasing a property, it's your income to housing ratio is a certain level, and it's not based on anything that we come up with, it's based on law. I think that would be super important in all of this conversation because I've heard this time and time again now recently, as of late. So if we could put something together maybe on that?
Yes, we can work with Chris to make sure that they, they have the correct guidelines because I think we're experiencing that some residents don't income qualify because their income is too low, and some don't qualify because their income has exceeded the AMI levels.
Right, and that, and also how the units work, how they're allocated toward a certain affordability, because to your point, if you don't make enough income, they can't just say, you know, for a specific unit, they can't just say, oh, well, we're gonna change the affordability on this and make it lower so that you could. I, I just think it is kind of a great mystery, and if we could explain that in greater detail, I think it would just be beneficial. And I don't even think this needs to be specifically for Villa Serena, I think as a blanket for any affordable housing, for people to understand how it works because I'm not even sure all of our council members, and, you know, I know our newest member is not here this evening, I'm not even sure if all of our council members are aware of how this all works, because it is somewhat complicated if you haven't dealt with it for a long period of time. So just something informational would be greatly appreciated. And with that, we're done with oral communications. Next up is Sandag, which we have not had, well, we actually had a meeting, but ended up not going on Friday. Did you have a report today? If you don't, that's fine, you could, you could, we could hit you up at the next meeting. We do have a special meeting this coming Friday, based on our last audit that was released yesterday.
We discussed the draft plan for the 2025 budget, but that will be coming up to the next board meeting, probably not this Friday, but the next scheduled board meeting.
Okay, all right. And then we do also have, I think HUD coming to our next, or Housing, no, it's California Housing.
HCD.
Yeah, HCD is coming to our next meeting, so if we have any questions, we might think of that in advance for them, just in case we have any pressing matters that we'd like to discuss with them. We might try to schedule a meeting, and I do have, I think, direct contact information for, from, for HCD person that will be at that meeting. League of California Cities? Oh, I do? I'm sorry, I do. My apologies, I totally forgot that that did come in. We have, is it Natalie Martinez? Sorry, we have to go back. Oral communications, my apologies. My apologies. And you're with Universidad Popular, aren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
You must be familiar with me. Yeah, so I'm here again in support of our Villa Serena residents. And speaking on what you ended on, Mayor Jones, I think it kind of followed what my colleague Angie had mentioned about having know your rights workshops for residents, open to every resident outside of the Villa Serena residents. There is a lot of misunderstanding, and I feel like it would circumvent the kind of comments that you're receiving if everyone's on the same page, and that goes along with also the relocation process, right? I think a lot of us are a little confused, and I think we mentioned that even the council was confused as to those guidelines as well. And I know they, what was it, National Corps presented a certain relocation process when the project was presented, but I also know there's state and federal guidelines as to that as well, and that'd be handy for our residents to know so that they know what they're entitled to and they know if they are or are not receiving these things. And I also just wanted to remind everyone, I know you probably got this in your update regarding Villa Serena, but there is a residence meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM. The residents really appreciated council member Núñez and Mayor Jones being there last time, and I know they'd appreciate it if you could join us again. Thank you.
24 hours notice is not enough notice for, for most of us, but thank you, Natalie. And the relocation process, we are not, we are not actually part of that, but thank you for bringing that up. And then we will be getting, oh, I'm sorry.
I will be at the meeting tomorrow. It's on my schedule, so I'm planning on attending.
Okay, I was actually still, I was getting ready to address our, our city manager. We are going to be getting that information put in a sheet, so we will be able to have that available for folks so that they understand what the affordability requirements are. And that changes, I can't remember how often the, what's it called? I asked you for that today and you sent it to me, but I haven't, I haven't gotten that yet. That's actually from the county website?
I would, I would need to confer with Sylvia so that I don't misspeak on the record.
Area median, AMI, which is the area median income level, and I think we are lumped in with Carl's, but if I'm not mistaken. So anyway, that, that does change on, I'm not sure how often, but when that does change, it is, it is changed within, at the county level, I guess. They have it on their website, so we can always refer to that. So maybe we should have a link actually to that from our website.
Yes, and it does, it is posted on the county website, and it changes every May.
Oh, every May, once a year. Okay, so I guess that depends on the fluctuating income of folks. All right, okay, sorry, my apologies on that. I didn't do that purposefully, I forgot that came in at the last minute. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
Last Thursday, I went up to Burbank representing the county on the Revenue and Taxation Committee. We heard information on the governor's proposal for upcoming 2425 fiscal year, budget of $291.5 billion with an estimated shortfall of $38 billion, and he will be pulling $13 billion out in reserves to help bridge that gap. The Legislative Analyst Office says the deficit is actually closer to $73 billion with no information on how they're going to come up with the additional funds. One of the things that the governor is pushing is to change ERAF, and ERAF is the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. It's where the state has shifted local tax revenues from cities, counties, and special districts to a state-controlled education fund, and they use that to meet obligations that are not covered under Prop 90, or Assembly Bill 98. And the funds are used to help schools and community college districts meet their minimum funding requirements. So he is going to have charter schools, which are generally controlled by our local districts, be eligible for those ERAF funds, which without additional funding would put additional strain on the existing funding mechanism for our districts. Lauren Perhoda from Caltrans was there. I won't say we beat her up, but we asked her some pretty tough questions. She's in charge of the, she is the director of the road charge programs, and that program is continuing, where it started out as a voluntary program. It's going to be expanded statewide, so us sitting up here, we may be offered the opportunity to volunteer. Anyone in the audience may be given that opportunity. And you'll have either a transponder, mandatory reporting, but they want to see exactly how many miles people are driving, where they're driving, and where they're going when they do drive. Time of day, kind of vehicle, gas mileage. They currently estimate that fossil fuel vehicles pay $300 annually in taxes by at the pump, and since electric vehicle owners don't buy gasoline, they're assessed $100 annually on their registration. There was no discussion offered about bridging that gap, to have EV drivers move up to the $300 annually that fossil fuel vehicles are using. But they do say that the gas revenues continue to drop as we move to EVs, so they're kind of counterintuitive in their, their thought process, but they did discuss the inability of the current infrastructure to manage the EVs that we have now, but with the mandates coming, it's something else they're going to have to work on to ensure that we do have power to charge the cars. And that concludes my report for this month.
So ERAF, we get 7.2 cents out of every property tax dollar. ERAF gets 14.26 cents out of every dollar, like double what we get. And they are now going to be allocating, oh, and the school district actually gets 30...
38?
38.25 cents. I actually thought it was 36.
That's 38.
I've been, I've been jipping them by two cents of what I've been telling people.
They would let you know if you shorted them.
Well, no, I've just been representing it wrong. I thought they only had 36 cents. So the 14.26 cents, they're talking about allocating some of that toward charter schools? Or allowing them to apply for it?
They kind of pull the money together and it goes to the school districts now and the community college districts. What they're going to do are make the charter schools eligible for those funds, which will diminish the amount that's available for.
For the schools.
Exactly.
I got you. That's what I thought you meant, but I wanted to double check that number and make sure that was right. Okay, well, okay, yes, council member.
Mayor, if I may, I want to add to the, to the report. I was also in Burbank last week, representing on the Community Services Committee, and I do want to mention that the focus, the emphasis was on homelessness and trying to address the issues of encampments throughout the state. And so I do want to mention that we were asked as a committee to vote on whether or not to support SB 1011 by Senator Jones, and this is having to do with encampments and penalties. We did have a robust discussion, and ultimately, the committee decided to wait until June, when we expect to have a decision by the Supreme Court. And so I think we ended up punting until, until we have a decision, but I do want to bring to the, to the attention of the body and the city that this is going to be an ongoing discussion, this issue. And also, I did receive an email, there was a survey sent out to the committee members, and the email says that it was sent to the city manager, and I'm not sure who else, in order to respond to the survey on how the cities wanted the issue to be addressed, to help inform.
Well, we definitely don't want the state to control us, I know that much. Everything that I ever fill out is we want local control, we don't want the state to tell us what we have to do with, here within the city. So, okay, let's see, North County Transit District, deputy mayor.
Yes, we had a meeting last Thursday. I have an update to our operations. We, this is as of January. System-wide, the ridership's up about 6.5%. And our budgeted goal, actually, the system ridership was 6.5% above the budgeted goal. And the Breeze Ridership has increased about 9.5% of January to January, year to year. Coaster has increased 19.2%, and Sprinter was 11.6%. Our youth opportunity pass usage increased 31%.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
That's probably why they increase.
We're tracking that, too. And another item is, we now have a new federal advocacy group. Holland and Knight is going to support our efforts at the federal level that will help advance discretionary grants and legislative agenda items, and so that we feel that's a better fit than how we were doing it previously, and they'll have a three-year term for that. So hopefully, there might be better coordination among all of us in San Diego, maybe.
Well, as long as MTS doesn't try to take over in CTD, I'm good. They have very different needs than us, and I can know, we all know how that'll end up going, because what will happen is North County's needs will never even be discussed. You'll no longer have North County folks on the board advocating for our, our separate cities, and then also our regional needs, so that would be something I would never support. North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Núñez.
Thank you, mayor. Our next meeting will be in May.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Real quickly, since I had plenty of time on my commute back from Burbank, I did listen into the meeting, and I would have to say that was the shortest North County Transit meeting I've ever heard. Very brief. We meet Thursday, mayor.
As long as it was brief and brilliant, it's all good.
Always is.
Okay. City Council Business Visits, I believe you ladies had one, yes?
Start? Okay, so we visited Specialized Bikes. They're over near High Tech High in the single-story.
In the old Singer Building?
In the old Singer Building.
In the old Singer Building, no one knows that too much. That Singer has in sewing machines.
They were founded in 1974 in Morgan Hill, California. They design, manufacture, and market bikes, bicycles, and components. And they moved to San Marcos, they're very new, they moved to San Marcos, and it's an online fulfillment center. So they do online sales, local events and marketing, and it's very interesting because you walk in and they have all these bikes in boxes, there you go, and as the orders come in, then they have a team and they then assemble the bikes and send them out all over the country.
So it's like an RTA thing, ready to assemble, that they're doing on site, and then they ship them out?
Yes.
Because when I, when I do an RTA thing, it always has extra parts. So that's, that's really interesting. Well, that's better because then people don't have to go through that part.
Right.
So they could actually house more of them on site without having to use all the space all the time.
And the San Marcos location is the second biggest inventory in Southern California behind Ponmona. Built to order, bikes are shipped fully assembled. Do you want to take it from there, Maria?
Some retailers are licensed to sell specialized, and specialized draw local businesses into the company through omni channels.
I don't know what that means. Do you remember what that means?
I do not remember.
So they recently acquired Incline Bikes and Rock and Roll Cyclery. Unlike their industry acquisitions, they keep the integrity of the brands and the employees. They're very proud of that. Specialized offers many types of bicycles. They provide, they pride themselves in making e-bikes with hydraulic brakes, meaning they are faster than other brands. And the company's goal is to start supporting education for youth e-bike usage through free clinics promoted via their social media channels, and we thought this might be a great opportunity for us to partner with them as a city.
I see our captain in the back, I'm thinking the very same thing. I know, I'm thinking what you're thinking. That would be great to have some e-bike, e-bike education, because a lot of the kids are really not being very responsible on them.
Yes. The company is partaking in and hosting community events. Specialized will be involved in the, what is this, the BWR? It will throw.
Belja Waffle Ride.
Yes. And will throw a wellness fair on June the 8th with involvement in the community and their proximity to the city's soon-to-open bicycle pump track. Specialized is bringing to Mendris. uh, soon-to-open bicycle pump track. Specialized is bringing tremendous value to San Marcos.
And I have, I keep thinking. I have one more, um, thing to share that I thought of while you were talking is, um, a couple of the, of the people there, um, offered to give input into, um, as we plan future bike lanes. Um, one of them commutes on a bike.
From Solana Beach.
Solana Beach, um, maybe one from.
Oh, Shinsai.
Yeah. And so they had some suggestions, so staff will keep them in the loop. So if we ever need their, um, um, advice on plans, um, they're pretty well informed on what works and what doesn't work. So that, that was a good contact for that too.
Yeah, definitely. Um, you know, we had actually recently, and I'm trying to think when that comment period ended. Because I actually, we had, um, we had a feedback link. I, I sent it out to a bunch of cyclists that, that ride in our city. So, um, I know we had that recently where people, we were trying to get feedback on, on our bike lanes and what people would like to see. I don't know if we're past that part of what we were doing on our outreach efforts on that. Um, but it would be good if we, if we still can incorporate some of those answers. If we could maybe send them the same, um, feedback tool that we had active. I don't know if it's possible, but I thought maybe I'd mention that.
Okay, I can look into it with staff. I think where the, the comment period for the ATP is possibly closed.
Yeah.
We're always open to feedback.
Yeah, our ATP, I couldn't think of the name of it, our Active Transportation Plan. Thank you, um, Michelle on that. Okay, uh, was there anything else? Sorry.
That's it.
Okay. And then, um, San Marcos Creek Project. Michelle, do we have good news?
Um, well, we have a lot of rain, um, and we have some more rain forecast.
We didn't have any flooding, so that's a good thing.
Yes, the, the, the infrastructure is working as it's supposed to and we're providing it with remarkable testing. So that's good news. Um, but we're continuing to be delayed in the final phases of planting. So the hard infrastructure's in place, um, including some new signage kiosks, benches, and mile markers for those who want to run along the, the trail. Um, and we're just gonna have to wait Mother Nature out in order to get the final planting done.
Well, what about our lights? The flashing lights?
Yes, we still have our disco lights going in that area. Um, Isaac is constantly following up. Our engineering team's constantly following up. But the lights are not yet resolved, but there's a lot of staff working with the contractors, pushing really hard. And there's some contingency plans that are in place should we need to adjust.
Because we have a ribbon cutting coming up. Yes?
Yes, we have a currently scheduled rain or shine event. Um, we are very closely monitoring the weather channels because it's starting to look a lot more likely that it's a rain event versus a shine event, which is going to be quite complicated because anywhere that we want to stage is going to be very muddy and the final plantings aren't done. So I think we're going to circle the wagons and decide if we're really gonna brave a rain event versus, versus not.
Well, the curly-haired girl, that's me. I don't really care about that part. However, however, if we, if we feel that we can have our lights actually working, I would, I would, my vote, it's not a vote, but my, my, my.
Your input.
My thought would be if we, if we could actually have the lights working a hundred percent and we are already gonna have rain, I'd be okay with pushing that out a little bit. I know it's hard to get in our schedules, but, um, I feel like that would be one of the most immediate needs. If we actually have no more disco lights, that would be fabulous.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion, not a vote. But anyway, yes, councilmember.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
The forecast is for rain on Saturday, starting at five-thirty, going till almost six o'clock at night with a short break before Sunday. We have the Easter egg event scheduled Saturday. Is that in jeopardy or has that been decided yet? I see Mr. Olson back there squirming.
Yes, I, I don't think we can hold back the Easter bunny.
So the, the wet bunnies and all?
The Easter bunny comes on Easter rain or shine.
Okay, all right, um, quick question, pump track. You mentioned, it was mentioned earlier, when is the pump track opening? I kept, I keep forgetting to ask about it and I actually had someone ask me and I'm like, oh my gosh, that was supposed to be a while ago, so what's going on?
Yeah, the, the pump track has also been subject to, to rain delays.
Okay.
Um, but that, that is progressing. The, the testing out there, I've seen some videos and it's quite a track.
I have people that actually have said, if we need someone to go out there and ride on it and check it out.
Yes, we do.
Who should I have them contact? Can you just send that to me?
Yes, Mark Olson.
We have people, I, I have, I have a lot of people that want to get out there and get in the mud and they're excited about it. Yeah, yeah, I actually even have someone that is, um, um, a paraplegic that wants to go out there and check it out. So we'll have, we'll have all different kinds of people out there on their, on their bicycles and, um, cycles. So I feel like we could get a lot of feedback and really make adjustments if we needed to.
Yes, we're, we're doing well. The, I don't want to throw out a date because the rain has been incredibly unpredictable.
That's okay. That's right, just knowing is, is good. Okay, um, any other council commentary from the council? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Oh, is there cake still? All right, there's probably cake still. So if you want to go, let's have cake. Okay.